Very good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Thank you, folks, for being here in the audience. It's good to see you. Thank you, folks, for watching at home on TV 6. And those of you who are joining us on Facebook, it's always glad to have. We're always glad to have you as part of our meeting and your town government. We're going to start this evening with our traditional roll call.
Welcome, everybody. My name is Ivan Huffman.
Welcome. Good to see everyone. I'm Julie Puckett.
Happy Thursday evening. My name is Melissa Hahn.
Yeah, I'm Mike Horn.
Good evening. I'm Jane Welch.
And I'm Monty Long.
Very good.
And Sadler.
Oh, Dr. Sadler has joined us. Very good. So, Dr. Sadler is coming in from up above or wherever he's coming in from. Okay, very good. We also have our Town Manager Stacy Tolbert, our Town Attorney Elliott Bus, our Town Public Works Director John Hannah coming around the room. I don't see Veronica, but she's back there in the sound booth. We have our Clerk Dora Moore, and we have our Finance Director Cam Orrell. Thank you, folks, for being here. You don't have any choice. All right. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation led by Councilmember Jane Welch and our pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Julie Puckett.
May we pray. Thank you, Lord, first of all, for all your blessings. Thank you for the freedom that we have in our community. May we continue to work together as this council, work together locally, regionally, and nationally. For we are all one individual. We're one family. We're one community. We are one nation with one dream, peace for all. In your name we ask. Amen.
Please join me in your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have we had any changes or additions necessary for the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. Our new Planning Director Lynn Cochran is unable to be with us, so we will introduce him next month. And also, Mayor, if it is okay with the council, we would like to add a resolution to the end of new business related to the Jack Warren Park Amphitheater.
Okay, and that will be new business item G?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. Councilmembers, with those two additions, is there any other changes or revisions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
Salute.
Mr. Huffman, I believe, beat Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Yes, okay. So, Mr. Huffman makes the motion, and Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. All righty. Consent agenda, Ms. Manager.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On this evening's consent agenda is Resolution 2024-038, the financial statements for the month ending July 31st of 2024, approval of agenda briefing minutes for August 1st, 2024, and also approval of regular reading minutes for August 8th, 2024.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. As you heard, there are minutes in our financial reports. We take them as a group unless any individual council member wants to discuss any of those separately. And at that point, they can call it, and we can discuss that. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve?
Sir. Puckett makes the motion. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. So, we're going to skip over our introduction. I was really looking forward to introducing Lynn to our community. But we do want to recognize tonight our Public Safety Committee members, and I think Harlan, you and Christopher are the only two here. How about coming up front? All righty. Good to see you guys. How are you? Sure, come on up. Harlan and Christopher. And briefly, when Lewisville was formed in 1991, we had a number of committees that were set up, and the Public Safety Committee was one of those. At that time, we really looked to them to do a lot of kind of the heavy lifting to get the town on the right direction. A lot of it was trial and error. A lot of it had to do with how we were going to deal with parking. A lot of it was going to be to do how we dealt with speeding and all of the other issues that come before the council. Over the course of the years, the kind of primary functions of the Public Safety Committee have been absorbed either by the Sheriff's Department, our Public Works Director, or the Fire Department. But that's certainly not to underestimate or undervalue the work that the committee does. Harlan, you have been a member of the committee for how long?
Almost 20 years.
Almost 20 years and chair for a long time.
Yes.
Okay. And Chris, you've been a member of the committee for?
15.
15 years. If you notice that it's Harlan and Chris, and they both have the same name, well, recognize that they have both provided exceptional service, dedicated service, to the town of Lewisville. So, we'd like to recognize you this evening. Town Council expresses their sincere appreciation to Harlan and Chris for their outstanding service to the town of Lewisville as a member of the Lewisville Public Safety Advisory Committee this 12th day of September 2024. Thank you, Harlan. Appreciate it a lot. Thank you. Was it upside down, or was it the correct way? Here we go. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Aye. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Tom, I know you can hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, girl.
Thank you, Tom.
PJ, you're next.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hope everybody's had a good week thus far. Our stats for our August, if you pull those up, the 698 calls for service, 357 security checks, 32 traffic arrests, 12 alarms. So, that's down a little bit from last month. And then, still response time of about four minutes with those. So, coming to the end of our concert season, you notice that it's getting dark a little earlier, so we're utilizing our lights, our light towers out at the major intersections. So, just encourage people to kind of slow down as we're entering into those events and dismissing. So, I did want to give everybody a heads up. There's been a little bit of change to the tour of Tanglewood. That happens Saturday, September 21st. Typically, the tour of Tanglewood leaves out of Tanglewood and comes through the town on this side on Sundays, and it never fails as people are getting out of church and the late afternoon. That's when we get a bunch of the traffic resistance. So, the coordinators have switched those routes so that Saturday it will come through town, and we might try to put something up. Just you'll see some flags and some markers. We'll have deputies stationed at the intersections, and there'll be some motorcycle, trail cars, and lead cars following those folks as they enter in and out of the county. And then, on Sunday, it leaves out of the backside of Tanglewood and heads through the Davidson County route. So, a little bit of a change. Just wanted to give everybody a heads up with that. So, just kind of bear with us. It's going to be a, you'll see a lot more cyclists on Saturday than you normally would. So, that's what's going on. So, try to help spread the word. Just be patient, and we'll get through it. So, hope everybody has a great week and a good weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you, PJ. Any questions? All righty. PJ, I want to thank your deputies yesterday, of course. Those of us remember what yesterday was, and it was our remembrance of 9/11. I think our fire departments, both here in Vienna and your sheriff's deputies, were kind enough to pose for a picture that we could put up on our website and remind folks that while it's been 23 years ago, we will never forget. And the bravery and the courage and the valor that was shown by our first responders that day is kind of embedded in our service today. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, would you like to read the Constitution Week Proclamation?
Proclamation 2024-003 honoring Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd of 2024. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law and not by individuals, and whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention of 1787. And whereas in celebrating the anniversary of this significant document, we honor and preserve the foundations of liberty and justice for every American citizen. Now, therefore, the mayor and town council in Lewisville do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week. In Lewisville, all citizens are urged to reaffirm the ideals established by the framers of the Constitution as we work with each other to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Proclaim this the 12th day of September, 2024.
Very good. And we've been requested to do this by the American Legion? No.
I believe that's correct. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. The American Legion, or the Daughters of the American Revolution, or one of our great patriotic groups?
I think it's a combination of the groups that come together.
Very good. Councilmembers, without objection, we will pass on this proclamation as duly confirmed by the Lewisville Town Council and make the presentation to them, so they'll have this as part of their record. But thank you. We will have two opportunities tonight for residents to speak. The first, these are public forums. The first one is right now. One will occur toward the end of the meeting. If there's anybody that wishes to come forward and speak, share your ideas and thoughts with the town council. Now's the time to do it. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Mayor, you have one.
I have one from Lisa Glunt. And I was looking right at her. I figured she would leap out of her chair and head on up.
Thank you, Town Council. My name is Lisa Glunt, and I live at 310 Foxridge Circle. Last month, I addressed Town Council to make sure that you were aware of a 56-house development project on Shady Brook Lane that would make a significant impact on my neighborhood. After a month of literally drinking from the fire hose, to understand more about ordinances, zoning, the comprehensive plan, making calls, meeting with people, and trying to triangulate who owns what responsibility in this process, and to find if there was any hope of mitigating this proposed plan, I don't know if my comments last month to the Town Council were ridiculous, comical, or just plain sad. Because at that time, I had a belief that this project was not aligned with what I had read about Lewisville's comprehensive plan and strategy for retaining and preserving Lewisville's small-town character and charm. I had a belief that there was a democratic process where voting and taxpaying homeowners would have a say in what happens to their community. And I had a belief that a reasonable mitigation could be achieved, one in which the developers could still make a profit, people could still buy new homes, and I could still have the character and the nature of the neighborhood that I live in and love. In the end, the key thing that I learned was that what I believed a month ago is not reality. There are three players in this equation. We've got the developer, the town of Lewisville, and the homeowners impacted by this new development. Two of the players, the developer and the town of Lewisville, make the decisions, and the homeowners have to live with the decisions that they make. I'm not going to spend the rest of my three minutes trying to change what is inevitable. However, I have a couple of points that I would like to make. In my effort to gather the three parties together for information sharing, I invited representatives from the town of Lewisville to participate. They politely declined because they did not want to give an appearance of bias on the topic. I think the town of Lewisville should be biased because you represent the citizens of Lewisville, and therefore, you should represent our reasonable concerns. I agree that you should be impartial in your decision-making, but shouldn't you be on the citizen's side? In my comments from last month, I found all sorts of documents touting the character of Lewisville and the desire to keep its charm. But according to page 39, which I know you can't see it, of the 2022 Lewisville Comprehensive Plan, nearly all of Lewisville, everything that you see in yellow here, can expect the same kind of development that is happening in my backyard. That includes clear-cutting forests and cramming as many houses as possible into as little space as possible. And all of it comes along with an unsightly catchment pond to handle the refuse of the construction and the water that the land can no longer absorb. My ask to you for the sake of the future of Lewisville is, can you do anything to change the UDO, to change the comprehensive plan, the zoning or the zoning process, that might allow the rest of Lewisville to not look like my backyard? In other words, can the town of Lewisville make changes that allows it to execute against how it has marketed itself? Of the three players in this equation, the developer, the town of Lewisville, and the homeowners, there's a clear winner and a clear loser. So, I'll end my statements with a congratulations to the developer. They win. They get all 56 houses. They made no mitigation to lessen what they planned to do back there. And I say, I guess, congratulations to the town of Lewisville. I'm not sure if you win or lose. Sure, you're expanding your tax base, but let's face it, Lewisville is about one McDonald's away from becoming Clemmons, and I think you've stretched your brand equity a little too far. The clear losers are Lisa and Chip Glunt. And I say "just us" because I don't represent everybody in my neighborhood. As homeowners, the only decision we can make was to live with it or leave it. And for this reason and this reason alone, we've chosen to leave it. And on September 27th, we are moving, and I will no longer be a resident of Lewisville. And in my last address to the Town Council with this statement, if the residents say no, how can the town say yes? I now know that Lewisville can't say no. It's all a part of the Unified Development Ordinance, which I hope makes a soft pillow at night because it's nothing but a punch in the gut to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Lisa, would you, if you don't mind, would you share your statement with our clerk so that we have it in its entirety?
I can.
Thank you.
I've made a few notes. Would you like it like it is, or?
You can email it to me if you would like. Will that work?
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we want to old business. Dora, I believe you have a facility use exemption, reaffirmation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, per Resolution 2024-037, excuse me, per Resolution 2022-055, which talks about remote participation, we need to have Councilmember Puckett to reaffirm her vote of affirmation for Resolution 2024-037, the facility use exemption for Forsyth County Fire Historical Society, Inc. Last month, Councilmember Puckett did vote in favor of it, and since she did that remotely, we do need her to do that in person.
I reaffirm my vote.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Dora, you have some road closure.
Yes, sir. The first ordinance before you for your consideration is Ordinance 2024-031. It's declaring a road closure for the Christmas parade in Lewisville on December 8th. This is something we must do annually and submit to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Any questions, councilmembers? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
This makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just going to pause here for a second. Ordinarily, we try not to make comment about folks who make comments at our public hearings. I've known Lisa and Chip for a long, long, long time, and my heart is hurting to know that they're not going to be part of our community anymore. The outcome of what is occurring there, unfortunately, we're bound to by law. We attempted at one recent time in our history to try to stop development, and we ended up paying a pretty price for that effort. So, I think I want to say, Lisa, you, I clearly understand what you and Chip are doing and why you're doing it, and what I feel is a great loss to our community. I'm hoping that maybe by transmission again of your statement, and maybe my sentiments and the sentiments of those council members that might agree with me, that we can come back and maybe reexamine this a little bit as a planning board and see if there's anything at all that we can do that doesn't require legislative approval and that we can maybe address some of the issues that you just said. Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to do that because we generally don't do that. All righty. Lynn was scheduled to speak, but I believe Stacy, you have the next item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight before you is Resolution 2024-039. This is to set a public hearing for a UDO text amendment for golf driving ranges. In this resolution, you will see the public hearing is to be set for October 10th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Any questions for Stacy? Excuse me. If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Puckett makes the motion. Mr. Huffman makes the second to set the public hearing for, what was the date again, please?
The UDO text amendment for golf driving ranges.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that will be at our October meeting.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Thank you. Lynn, alias Stacy, you have the next item.
All right. Next is Resolution 2024-040. This is also to set a public hearing for the rezoning request, case number L-110, associated with an annexation request. The public hearing is to be set for October 10th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. This is for a property outside of town limits along Schallford Road.
Any questions for Stacy? Entertainer motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion. Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Yes, sir. So, the next resolution is Resolution 2024-041. This is set in the public hearing for the annexation request for 7825 Schallford Road, which is the same as the rezoning request you just scheduled for.
Very good. Any questions? Entertainer motion, please.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Long makes the motion. Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is... Waiting for the voice from above.
He said aye. I'm sorry.
That is unanimous. Dora, you have the final item there.
Well, we have...
We have G after that, I know.
Well, we're going to do item E, Resolution 2024-042. This is a resolution establishing a resident recognition policy. It will outline the criteria for certificates, proclamations, and I'm one of the reasons Lewisville is a great place to live.
And the acronym is?
We do not have one. And so, it just outlines the procedures we do for that.
Very good. Any questions for Dora? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Item F.
The next item is Resolution 2024-043. This is a resolution for a facility use exemption for West Forsyth Christian Preschool on April 4th, 2025. They are requesting the entire building usage of Mary Alice Warren Community Center for the annual silent auction and gallery hop.
Any questions? Entertainer motion, please.
Motion to approve. Resolution, yep, 2024-043. Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion?
I do have a discussion, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I took a look this afternoon at the facility use exemption policy that we recently passed as a council, and I just wanted to make note that six of the six conditions that are in that policy, this particular organization in their application process met all six. So, I know that when I was reading through the resolution, it refers to the policy itself, but is there any way that we can notate that it's meeting all the conditions within the policy, or is that already in the resolution? I know where it says like, whereas this, and whereas all the whereases?
Yeah, we could add that.
Okay. I think that that would be helpful for a future reference.
So, do you want this one amended to reflect that statement?
Yeah. Do I need to?
Maybe not all six, but maybe the wording should be "met the conditions."
Correct. Yep.
So, that will be the amendment?
An amended resolution.
By Ms. Hunt. And Ms. Puckett, do you accept that?
Yes.
Change? Very good. The second is accept that? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Are we added?
Manager Tolbert's going to present that.
Very good.
All right. For forgiveness for the last-minute addition, I would like to start by saying this is something that's been happening a little bit behind the scenes between our council members, myself, and Mary Alice Warren. Okay. So, Resolution 2024-044 of the Lewisville Town Council is before you tonight to name the Jack Warren Park Amphitheater in honor of Mayor Michael L. Horn. Forgive me. I did not... So, if I may compose myself, I would like to share the resolution with those that are in the audience and also those that may be watching, and it has been shared with Ms. Mary Alice. So, we do actually have a special guest in the back as well. Whereas Mayor Michael L., Mike Horn, has lived a life of public service, serving the town of Lewisville since 1993. And whereas, over the course of his public service, Mayor Horn has served as mayor for 11 years total, mayor pro temp for 10 years total, and a council member for six years total. And whereas, in addition to serving on the town council, Mayor Horn has served on numerous local and state boards representing the town of Lewisville, including the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board of Directors. And whereas, Mayor Horn takes pride in finding opportunities for Lewisville to shine as a leader among North Carolina municipalities and in modeling the way of a public servant for his colleagues across the state. And whereas, the betterment of Lewisville and resident involvement have been of utmost importance to Mayor Horn. And whereas, Mayor Horn has diligently supported and promoted community involvement in many ways, including the establishment of active community gathering areas in the town, namely Schallford Square, G. Galloway, Reynolds Community Center, Jack Warren Park, and Mary Alice Warren Community Center. And whereas, it is the desire of the town council to honor Mayor Horn by naming the new amphitheater at Jack Warren Park in his honor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lewisville Town Council approves the naming of the Jack Warren Park Amphitheater to hereafter be known as the Michael L. Horn Amphitheater, and that this is not only suitable and proper, but most deserved, just, and becoming. Adoptive and effective this 12th day of September, 2024, by the Lewisville Town Council.
A move approved.
This really has caught me off guard a little bit.
We figured it would.
You all have been very clandestine in pulling this one off. You know, you look back on your involvement in the town. Dr. Sadler, Jane, you've been involved in the town. You know all the things that we worked toward, and we always try to work for the public's best interest. We set politics aside. We work collaboratively, and none of us ever accomplish anything by ourselves. It's always all of us working together. It's always all of us working together. We share a vision, we share a goal, and we share the spirit of cooperation. So I, I'm honored and proud and certainly surprised of this presentation tonight. I, I, I am humbled truly by this. Just, I want to be careful so that when you start scheduling events there, you don't call it the Horn Pavilion, because people may think it's a brass band ensemble or something down there. But thank you very much for the surprise, it's, it's, it's a, it's a great honor. Thank you.
Mayor, we have a motion on the floor for approval by Dr. Sadler.
Second.
Oh, Mayor Pro Temp, would you do the honors, please?
What?
Just call for the vote.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Yeah, I'd like to call for the vote. Yeah.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Certainly aye. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, it's an honor. And my wife knew about it, because she never comes to council meetings, but there she is. Notice her coming in. Thank you very much. Mary Alice, Mary Alice, I hope you're watching tonight, because she does watch our, our meetings, so if you're watching, just know that, that so much of this would not have been possible without you and your generous, wonderful gift of land to the town of Lewisville and its citizens. Thank you. Okay, administrative report, Stacy.
Yes, maybe I can get through this one a little bit easier. So upcoming events taking place in town, Friday night, this, this Friday night, September 13th, we have a movie night coming up. The movie that is playing is Paw Patrol: The Mighty Movie. Clean Sweep is scheduled for this weekend, Saturday, September 14th. No sign up is needed. You just show up at Town Hall Annex, that is located at 6550 Shallowford Road, just down the road a little bit from Town Hall. At 9:00 AM, I would mention that volunteers under the age of 18 must have adult supervision. So the concert series continues at Shallowford Square, September 21st, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, is featuring the Coconut Grove Band. It is a classic rock and pop with a special tribute to Jimmy Buffett. September 28th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, is featuring The Wildflowers, a Tom Petty and the Heartbreakers tribute band. And the last concert of the season will be October 5th, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM, featuring the Kruger Brothers, bluegrass, and new American folk. As always, more information on our website, lewisvillnc.net.
Very good. Any questions? All righty, ladies and gentlemen, we've arrived at the final time this evening. Should you have comments you'd like to make to the council, anyone would like to come forward, please state your name and address. I see breathing, but no moving bodies. So council members, any final comments this evening?
I have a final comment. I just want to thank Jane and Mary Alice Warren and Franny and staff and all of those, all of you council members that have been aware of all of this. I think it's awesome that we were able to surprise him, because not often are we able to surprise him. So good job on everyone that came together. To your point, Mayor, this is kind of what we do when we represent the town of Lewisville is we all come together, and so residents be very, rest assured that we're going to continue to do that as Mayor gets his proclamations, recommend, whatever they're, whatever they are right now. I'm nervous now, so, yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you, staff.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, council? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Simmons?
Second.
Mr. Huffin makes motion, Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Appreciate you joining us from home tonight, those of you who are in the chamber tonight, thank you for being here. Like I say, it's always, it's always important for us to see your faces and know that you are taking interest in your town government. With that, we're adjourned this evening.